Good morning, everybody. Welcome to September. I would ask Mr. Beauchamp to take the roll call, please. Good morning. Counselor Agar?
President.
Thank you. Counselor Atkinson?
President.
Thank you. Counselor Bushy?
Here.
Thank you. Counselor Bradley?
President.
Thank you. Counselor Broad?
President.
Thank you. Counselor Case?
President.
Thank you. Counselor Cook?
President.
Thank you. Counselor Dennis?
President.
Thank you. Counselor Ferguson?
President.
Thank you. Counselor Hand?
She's not on my name.
Counselor Field?
President.
Thank you. Counselor McRoberts? Counselor Miller?
President.
Thank you. Counselor Sageman?
President.
Thank you. Counselor Veen?
President.
Thank you. Deputy Ward and White?
President.
Thank you. We have quorum.
Thank you. We acknowledge that this land on which we are gathered today is part of the ancestral land of the Chipewa, Odoa, and Potawatomi peoples referred to collectively as the Anishinaabe. It is through the connection of the Anishinaabe with the spirit of the land, water, and air that we recognize the unique cultures, traditions, and values. Together as treaty people, we have a shared responsibility to act with respect for the environment that sustains all life, protecting the future for those generations to come. I'd ask any members of council to declare pecuniary interest now or where it may arise during the meeting. Seeing none at this time, I take a motion to go in camera for the reasons noted in the agenda. Counselor Broad and Counselor Ferguson, all in favor? Let's carry it. Go to Committee Room 3, please.
Welcome back and welcome, members of the public that have joined us as well, as well as the media. Please join me in a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Item number seven, I'd ask Mr. Beauchamp to rise and report. Motions of in camera, please.
Thank you, Board of Mayor. I can report that County Council met this morning for fourteen minutes to approve the Lampton County Council closed session minutes dated July 5th of 2023, and to receive a report on the potential acquisition of property in the city of Sarnia. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number eight, delegations. I'd look for a motion to allow presenters, Councillor Case and Councillor Hand, all in favor. Let's carry it. Our first delegation is virtual, Jacob Hanlon of Food Cycle Science. We'd like to present Food Cycle Science's municipal food waste diversion program. I believe Mr. Hanlon is signing on as we s- And I would remind Mr. Hanlon that he has ten minutes. The clock has been set. There is. Welcome, Mr. Hanlon. Welcome, Mr. Hanlon. You have ten minutes for your presentation.
Thank you very much. I'm just going to share my screen here and then I will get started. Okay, perfect. So, just want to start by saying thank you very much, Mayor and Councillors and members of staff and everyone in the county there for having me online today. My name is Jacob Hanlon and I'm the Municipal Program Coordinator at Food Cycle Science, and I'm really excited to provide some information on our municipal food waste diversion programs. Some of you may have seen our booth at the AMO Conference in London just a couple weeks ago, so it's nice to be here today to share some more information with you. So to briefly give you a little idea of who we are, Food Cycle Science is a Canadian company and we're based out of Ottawa, and we're focused on food waste diversion solutions. So we do this using our innovative technology, which is the food cycler. If you stop by our booth at the AMO Conference, you would have seen our food cyclers on display there. Basically, they're in-home food recyclers, and while they are sold direct to consumers through partners like Vitamix and Breville, we also put them into classrooms through partnerships not-for-profits like EcoSchools Canada, and then into municipalities through our municipal solutions. So our municipal solutions help many small, rural, remote, northern, and everything in between in terms of communities in Canada keep food waste out of their landfill. So we're currently working with 101 Canadian municipalities across eight provinces and one territory, from B.C. to Hay River up in Northwest Territories, East Coast, and many communities here in Ontario who either struggle with food waste management, or where green bins aren't necessarily the best option for them, the only option, or they're just not getting the participation that they would like with their green bin program. So the problem with food waste, I don't need to speak too much on it, but it is avoidable. It accounts for a large portion of our household waste, and it's made up of mostly liquid, which makes it, you know, not pleasant to deal with, and it gets heavy, it freezes in the wintertime. And then on top of that, when we put food waste into the landfill, it's responsible for generating some pretty harmful greenhouse gases, and all these factors make it so that food waste is a problem that has a strong municipal impact. So one of the impacts municipalities is because food waste takes up such a large portion of our waste stream, it is causing landfills to fill up more quickly than we'd like. Operating a landfill is obviously quite costly for a municipality or for a county, and we want to extend lifespan of our landfills for as long as we can. In terms of the environmental impact, when we put organic waste in the landfill, it's being squished between tons and tons of waste, and it doesn't have access to the oxygen that it needs to break down properly. So when it's in that anaerobic environment in the landfill, it's producing methane gas, which is quite a bit more harmful than CO2 in terms of the effect on our environment and on our atmosphere. So getting food waste out of that landfill and out of that waste stream, it can really solve some of these big issues. And another issue it can solve is just within our communities, when we put food waste in the garbage, it causes odors, which is unpleasant for humans, but it's typically attractive for animals like bears and raccoons who like to go through our trash. So as I mentioned, we get food waste out of the waste stream out of the landfill, and it can save on a lot of these issues here, and it can save in terms of hauling, disposal fees, save space in the landfill course, and then it can save residents on some hassle and any extra waste fees that they might face. So we often get asked the question, haven't we solved this already? And yes, there are traditional methods to addressing the issue of food waste. There are green bins, which are common in big cities, places with high population density and the right infrastructure, but this can be cost prohibitive, and it can definitely be operationally challenging to implement. And there are unrelenting costs that are associated with any kind of curbside collection in terms of increased labor charges, disposal, transfer stations, the list goes on. In terms of backyard composting, many people in your community might backyard compost, and this is a great solution, but unfortunately, participation rates aren't where we'd like them to be. It's not a feasible solution for everybody, especially those who don't have the land or the space for it. And it's certainly not a year-round solution as well, and there's still the concern about animals getting into that backyard bin. And then finally, the easiest solution is to continue to landfill organic waste, but you know, the long-term impacts, as I mentioned there, they're quite costly and they're harmful to the environment. So in case you don't know what the food cycler is, I'm going to play this video here for you just to give a depiction of what our machines are and what they do. So we basically propose a different way to deal with food waste, which decentralizes it, focuses on making it easy to deal with and right in the household at the individual level. So we built a small kitchen appliance, it's about the size of a bread machine, and you put in your food waste, and this can include things like meat, poultry, fish, dairy, even some bones. And then you push a button, and in about eight hours or less, you have a dry, odorless, and nutrient-rich soil amendment that comes out, pretty equivalent to a fertilizer. The machine can be used anywhere that has a plug. As you can see, the bucket comes right out, so the machine doesn't actually have to take up countertop space. And basically, that bucket can collect your food waste, and then you put it in the machine, which can be anywhere in a basement, in another room, in a garage, and then it will process up to three kilograms of food waste per cycle. As I mentioned, each cycle takes about eight hours or less, and uses minimal electricity, about similar amount time, your computer plugged in for the same amount of time. Just to briefly look at the two machines that residents use within our municipal programs, biggest difference, the one on the left has a two-and-a-half-liter capacity, while the one on the right is a five-liter capacity. Residents choose in the programs which machine is best suited for their household, and then they get that machine at the capacity that's best for them. And I'll just emphasize with this slide that in the cycle that takes less than eight hours, once your food waste is processed, there's about a ninety percent reduction in the weight and the volume of food waste. So not only are you getting an end product that's quite a bit reduced in its volume and weight, but that end product is something you can use right at home in your garden, and I'm going to get to some of the other options for using the byproduct here. Most residents put it into their garden, or even spread it along their lawn like a fertilizer, but some residents, if they don't necessarily have a garden, they'll put it into a backyard composter, a tumbler, or green cone, but it can also be integrated into leaf and yard waste systems and green bin collection where it's available. But another thing that's part of the program that we add is we'll work with local compost sites, local farms, and community gardens to set up some partnerships so that residents have somewhere where they can drop off their byproduct, and that can be integrated right back into their community. So I mentioned that we're working with many municipalities across Canada, and to date, we've completed pilot programs in over fifty municipalities and over six thousand households, and the results have been overwhelmingly positive. I'm not going to go through every stat that we've taken, but we basically survey every resident who's part of our program and get feedback and participation rates, diversion numbers. So basically, we've been able to achieve a net new diversion of about three hundred kilograms per year per household that's participating. We have a generous user experience rating of four point six out of five stars, and ninety-eight percent of residents who register for a food cycler program claim that they'll continue using the food cycler as their food waste diversion solution once the pilot program is over. And these pilot programs are typically kind of the starting point for municipalities. I know I presented to several municipalities within the county and promoted, starting off small with a pilot program, but with the case of Nelson out in British Columbia, after doing two small pilot programs to start, they're now putting a food cycler in every home in their city of about five thousand households. Just a few more slides to speak on the program before I wrap up. Basically, last summer, we were awarded $400,000 in a federal grant through Agriculture and AgriFood Canada as part of the government of Canada's Food Waste Reduction Challenge, and this has been invested right back into these pilot programs, and the target here is to continue having municipalities and counties sign on the program to reduce Canada's food waste. We are in the running for the grand prize, which will be awarded next spring, and any future funding that we do receive will be invested right back into these programs, and any municipalities that partner with us will have the right of first refusal. Briefly go through the pilot timeline here. It's a twelve-week program where residents will use their food cycler after purchasing it at the subsidized rate from their municipality or their county. After that twelve weeks is complete, they'll fill out that final survey. We collect the data from the survey and present it right back to you or back to your staff members, and then with that, we can determine diversion, we can estimate diversion and cost savings based on a small or a large program, and we can go from there to really determine if this is a program that we'd like to scale up or hit a certain target of your population with. And basically, we can also help with grant applications to help further the program as well. The cost structure of the program here, this is our traditional pilot program pricing. You can see the retail price there at the top if you're to order from Amazon or Vitamix, but with these municipal programs, the great part is we have our municipal discount that we add in, and when that's mixed with the federal investment from Impact Canada, brings the price of the machines down by fifty percent. The municipal subsidy that the program requires would be $100 per household, and then that allows a resident to use this solution at a very accessible cost and a very affordable cost, at $150 for the small machine or $300 for the large, which is substantial discount there from the retail price. And then after the pilot program is complete, that twelve weeks, the resident gets to keep their machine and continue using it. Last slide here, this is just to kind of summarize that last slide in terms of the pricing for a municipality or for a county. Basically, at that one hundred household level, for example, it would be $100 per household, and that would be a $10,000 municipal investment. We're happy to tailor this program. We have large programs, small programs across Canada. We have county-wide programs in Halliburton County and Bruce County where we've worked at the county level to spread funding across the lower levels and lower tiers. But basically, our programs are quite flexible, and we're happy to adapt it based on your resident demand and your budgets as well. So with all that being said, I'm sure this is in the agenda package, but just some partnership benefits to wrap up here. I'm not going to go through every single one, but this is an opportunity to bring a food waste diversion solution to your residents at a cost well below market prices and at a rate that's not going to increase or have any extra costs year after year the way that collection does. Basically, you get to extend the life of your landfill using a innovative tech, and you get to be a steward for the environment and for your residents. So with all that being said, I'd just like to thank you for taking the time. Apologize if I went a little bit over my time limit here, but we'd just like to welcome you as a partner in this food waste challenge and as a partner in diverting food waste from the landfills of the lower tiers. I'm here today just to kindly ask that you receive this presentation as information. I've been doing the same with the lower tiers in the county, and if there is any interest in working at the county level to partner with us and bring this solution to your lower tiers, I'm happy to work with you and work with a staff member to do so. So with all that being said, thank you very much, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you for that presentation. Any questions from council? Councillor Bradley?
Yeah, I have a question to staff. Normally, and you know, all of us are looking at this, and it's very expensive and moving forward, and we did a pilot project years ago. I really have difficulty with one proponent coming in front of this council, lobbying, no disrespect to you, but normally, there's a competitive process to see who's out there, and then the diligence is done, and then there's a recommendation to council. Here, we're getting a pitch in isolation, and I don't know, we need to change our procurement policy or speakers to council, but to me, it's not right, the one group, and we had this with a tiny home just a little while ago, and we went back and the council rightly said, we'll hear from everyone. So I don't know, Mr. Tefo, if you want to think about that? I just, and no disrespect to the speaker, I understand your pitch, and it's a good one, but we really need to be fair about if we want to do this as a county, how are we going to do it so it's a fair public process?
Mr. Tefo, please.
Yes, thank you for the question, Mayor Bradley. Ultimately, in terms of the delegations that present themselves to us through the clerk's office, we don't have much authority or discretion to refuse them unless your rules of procedure exclude the delegation per se. So in the context that you've mentioned, so this presentation, and of course, the prior presentation where individuals are making effectively, let's call it a commercial pitch, there is no discretion for us as staff members to deny the delegation without an amendment to the rules of procedure. But that being said, if it becomes an issue, because I think that's what you're getting to, we're sitting in a little bit higher numbers of individuals who wish to make a commercial pitch, then perhaps we can come back to council with a recommendation on amending your procedures. And I think it's because it's going to grow, and it also applies, we have a list of groups we will not hear from that have a legal dispute with the community, you know, that type of thing. So I think it'd be good to empower the staff to at least make judgments on the type of delegation that normally would have to go through a public process and bid for the work they want to do. I'll leave that with you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Councillor Sagman?
So I would make one comment. Full disclosure, I'm the Chair of the Board of Directors for Blue Water Recycling Agency, and our member municipalities also have an option through us to do an organic waste collection program, and the cost per household for that is $43 per year. And we also, in that program, were able to accept yard waste, where something like the food cycler is not able to accept yard waste. So it's a good option from a lot of households that's a little easier than having an appliance sitting on your countertop. It's the same as your garbage bin. And then the diversion rates are a little misleading. Our statistics show that the average household is 40.3 kilograms of waste per year. So the claimed diversion of 300 kilograms per year isn't, I don't think, accurate. So just to let our member municipalities know that Blue Water does have that option, and it's quite cost-effective. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, thank you, Jacob, for your presentation. Again?
Thank you very much, councillors and staff members and mayors. I really appreciate it, and I hope you have a great rest of your day.
Thank you. Our second delegation is Nathan Calhoun, Storyboard Solutions. Would like to speak to County Council regarding the affordable housing through a new lens and empowering the citizens that come up with solutions on their own properties.
Morning, everyone. That was a fun commercial. So, City Council, County Council, I'm here today to speak in favor of making a motion to create a grant program to incentivize property owners to build accessory dwelling units. I'm a resident- I'm a resident of Sarnia, I live in a small six hundred and twenty-five square foot apartment downtown. It is more than enough to meet my needs and put a roof over my head. I am very comfortable and I am happy there. I know that many people in Sarnia are struggling to find affordable housing. We all hear the stories all the time. We're tired of paying high rents and we're worried about our future. ADUs are a solution to the housing crisis. They are small secondary dwelling units that can be built on the same lot as a single family home. ADUs can be used to house family members, friends or tenants. A grant program would have several benefits. First, it would help to increase the supply of affordable housing in Sarnia. Second, it would activate citizens who are looking for passive income. Third, it would spread out affordable housing around the entire city. I'd like to emphasize the importance of decentralizing our housing strategy. A centralized housing strategy such as building a large apartment complex is expensive and slow to implement. It also puts all of the affordable housing into a single location and we all know the problems that that can cause. A centralized housing, a decentralized housing strategy such as an ADU grant program that I am proposing is more affordable, efficient and effective. It allows us to create affordable housing in a variety of locations, which is better for the community as a whole. I urge you to vote in favor of a motion to create a grant program to incentivize property owners to build accessory dwelling units. I believe that ADUs are a win-win for everyone. They can help to solve the housing crisis, provide passive income for homeowners and spread out affordable housing across the city. I had a slide, I guess I got it in a little bit late, but essentially I wanted to talk a little bit about the differences between a centralized strategy, which gets talked a lot of by politicians, it's very fancy on media news headlines, it's generally staff's interests and imagination, this is kind of where it gets limited, is a centralized housing strategy. So for instance, we know it costs approximately seventeen million dollars to build a fifty-unit apartment building. We need to, we need executive level paid bureaucrats to organize. I think you're going to be talking about that a little bit about today, is just hiring staff just to make something like this happen. It involves multiple levels of government and private organizations to execute. It's slow moving and it only helps the housing market when an entire project is finished. It requires ongoing maintenance and property management run by a single entity and it puts all affordable housing into a single location. As an alternative, a decentralized housing strategy, if, let's say you subsidize fifty thousand dollars per accessory dwelling unit in people's backyards, that's only a total of two point five million for the exact same amount of units that have the same amount of square footage. Each unit comes onto the market when it's ready, activates citizens looking for passive income, I think we all know somebody in our lives who is dying to have that apartment in their house so that they can have passive income on their own. Ongoing maintenance and property management spread across fifty different developers and property managers, spreads out the affordable housing around the entire city. And the County of Lampton Housing and Homelessness Plan in 2024 already indicates that this is a direction that we need to go. There's other locations in Canada such as BC, Simcoe, Hamilton that have similar grant programs in place. So I will leave you with this, that I would like to strongly recommend that council today because this is an emergency and it's a crisis that we all know, that staff create a simple grant program to incentivize property owners to build accessory dwelling units or secondary dwelling units, to put them on the market and dedicate two point five million for a 2024 pilot program to be tripled in 2025 with a positive engagement of it. Happy to answer any questions and work through this if anybody wants to talk about it further.
Okay, any questions from county council? Deputy Warden White, please.
Thank you, Mr. Calhoun, for your presentation. I think first off, just as a general comment, it's well understood in the broader community that a variety of solutions are going to be required to come to some sort of semblance of a solution to the issue that all municipalities are facing now across the country. So anyone who has gone to conferences or undertaken any sort of engagement in this discussion will understand that this is a critical component of finding our way towards a better outcome. In terms of the other communities that you referred to that are engaging in this grant program, can you just speak a little bit about the uptake? That's really my main concern right now is how long a program like this takes to gain some traction in the various communities that, because I have zero understanding of how quickly people bought into this concept.
I don't know the answer to that question, but there are grant programs in Hamilton, in Simcoe, in the entire province of BC. Some of them are structured more like a loan that is forgivable, some of them are just straight up grants in order to get moving on it. I don't know what the adoption rate of something like this is, but in just looking at that from a political standpoint, it seems to activate all the citizens rather than just activate the bureaucrats and the kind of like a top-down approach that normally happens. So all my understanding about how society works, that is a, this is a very easy way to activate an entire community to solve a larger problem.
Okay, Counselor Dennis?
Thank you, Warden, Mayor Mary. Through you to former councillor Calhoun. Let me start by saying you look very nice today. And in your opinion though, do you think that this could lead to the ghettoization of a lot of neighborhoods? I think that there would be a lot of neighborhoods in Sarnia that wouldn't like this idea out of fear that this could really devalue their properties. I understand that there's a lot of people that would like this idea. Times are tough right now, passive income would be good. But it's no different than, you know, Sarnia nixing our transit system and letting everybody be a taxi service and to earn passive income. Believe me, I'm not one for big government. I don't like big government and I don't like regulation, but that being, we have to have some rules and some regulations and those bylaws are in effect for a reason. We can't have a, can't be the Wild West. I would be concerned for one if, you know, if a person works hard and they build a nice house or have a nice house, live in a nice neighborhood and all of a sudden, you know, ten people are living or fifteen people are living in the house beside me, I think that would affect a lot of people, a lot of people wouldn't like that idea. What's your comments on that?
Mr. Calhoun, please.
Yeah, thanks for that. There's a few concerns that you highlighted. One is the ghettoization of parts of the city. That's what top-down strategies do. If you look through any historical understanding of government involvement in housing, the ghettos that we see are because you're putting everybody in one place. A decentralized strategy, and you as a real estate agent must know that any house with a granny suite has, actually brings up the value of that home. This isn't meant to put entire apartment buildings in people's backyard, it's simply to put a simple apartment in someone's backyard. We already have across Sarnia a citywide ordinance that secondary dwelling units are already zoned, people can already do that in their basements and think the garages and that are attached to the home. This is simply saying that they could build some sort of carriage house, convert a detached garage into an apartment for rent as long as it had all the proper zoning and things that are going on there. And I can assure you that a decentralized strategy like this does the opposite of bringing down prices and ghettoizing anything because you're having the actual property owners there, present, caring about their own property, caring about who they're renting it to. It's that kind of ownership that I think that any homeowner understands and wants to protect and so they're not going to be creating a situation for their neighbors and themselves to, that would cause the kinds of things that you're bringing up. So I do appreciate the concerns, but I think that a top-down strategy causes those problems and something like this actually alleviates a lot of them.
Counselor Sageman?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I agree with Mr. Calhoun. I think that Bill twenty-three has already started to empower municipalities to do this with secondary dwelling units and then a third apartment unit on the properties. As a home builder, what I would say is that, is that what is being suggested here is definitely going to be the solution forward. I think that capitalism works really well and people, people want to make the most money they can make out of their properties and I think that the only way we're going to get affordable housing spread out through our communities is some type of an incentive program. Collingwood, Simcoe both have these programs. They put a strict limit on, they have to be affordable. I would say that, you know, my municipality, we would want to see some type of a limit on whether or not they can be short-term rentals. I think that, under Bill twenty-three, that's what we were seeing, is the secondary unit is a short-term rental, not necessarily affordable housing. So that's concerning from an affordability standpoint and that's why I say capitalism works really well. If you can put a four thousand dollar a week Airbnb on your property, why would you do affordable housing? So I think if we're going to incentivize it, it also needs to have conditions and we have to be very careful in the role of, Collingwood's program is like a maximum of ten thousand dollars of an incentive, five and five. And Simcoe's is based on, I think, a fifteen or twenty-year agreement on an affordable rate of housing. So I think those are important factors. As far as the ghettoization, I don't see it. I think this is just what's necessary moving forward, there's too many people and nowhere to house them. So thank you for your presentation, I think it's just something we need to consider carefully.
To, a quick response to that as well is the, I find that the word affordable creates such this chaos in society, the way that it's used and that's what freaks people out about it, where we do also know capitalism and how supply and demand works, that if we can just get a supply of small apartments and just flood the market with it, it will become more affordable. Like we've already seen how our cities have worked that way and then when the demand starts to override that, then we start to see all the prices go up. So part of this solution is just simply to play into that typical way that we know how cities work and we know how capitalism works so that we can just flood the market with, call them safe and decent units rather than just simply affordable, because I do think everything will become more affordable if we can get more stuff online as soon as possible.
Counselor Hand, you had a question?
I just wanted to thank you for your presentation. I think all of us are aware of the change, you know, from the government. To talk about infill, it just hasn't, all of our population, all of our residents don't understand what infill means. So even in my small community, people are anxious about seeing semis being built and not understanding it's a better use of the land sometimes to allow two families to come instead of one family. It just takes the education. An infill doesn't mean that you're going to ghettoize your neighborhood if it's done properly. And my other concern was the fifty thousand dollars, I think it would need to be geared towards what someone is spending on their unit so people would try and make profit, you know, if it's one price. So there should be some stipulations in there, maybe a percentage, that'd be my comments. Thank you.
Yes. Yes, I would agree. My goal is to spark an imagination for this, figuring that staff would come up with something that would play into a lot of the different ways. A program like this could be taken advantage of because as anything does, it works that way, but there are other communities that are doing it in different models and I think that a collection of those of something that actually works for the County of Lampton would go a long way. The other piece to that too is, one of the things that the City of Sarnia needs to do is do a similar ordinance like they did with secondary dwelling units with ADUs so that the zoning piece is done, because we will get caught up in red tape bureaucracy very quick if a grant program like comes out by the county and the City of Sarnia is not, hasn't moved fast enough. This has been something that they were telling me was happening three years ago, still hasn't happened yet, so they really need to get the ball running and I'm going to their council meeting to hopefully light a fire under them just to get moving on that so that that piece is taken care of.
Counselor Bradley?
Calhoun, for your presentation. As a matter of fact, in November, there will be an official plan amendment at city council that will deal with this issue and remove what many think is bureaucracy and red tape. And in the past, as you know, these applications normally get referred to committee of adjustment. And if I understand correctly where we're going on this, the official plan amendment, that'll remove that requirement and it'll be there in very broad terms for approval without going through the council or the committee of adjustment process. So that's scheduled for November and that's also scheduled for public input. And I will say, just based on observations and feedback in the community, I think there's going to be a lot of debate, but I think it's a good direction to go to intensify. As the incentive program, I'd like to see where we're going with that first before we look at that as a county. And I was going to suggest at least to refer this back to staff to come back for the next meeting with any comments on an incentive program and how it would work countywide and how much it would cost. And I'll move that motion right after this discussion.
Okay, well, if there's no other comments, we can deal with that motion now? So do we have a seconder? Counselor Cook, seconds? Discussion?
And to follow up on Mr. Calhoun's comments, I'd like to turn this around really quickly since we've made this the number one issue in Lampton County. So move it, it'll be brought back if possible, high-level comments on how such a plan would work and the cost for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Warden White?
Thank you, thank you for the motion. I was prepared to do similar. My concern is that we have something back in time as well, post the report, so that we can enact it in time for the next budget. So as long as that's considered in this report, I'd be happy to support this.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, pose if any, motion passes. Moving on to our third delegation is Mr. Jason Villaln, General Manager, Blue Water Association for Safety, Environment, Sustainability, BASIS. Would like to speak to council in regards to the restructuring of BASIS. Welcome, Jason, you have ten minutes.
Thank you, Warden, and good morning, councillors. Appreciate the opportunity to come in front of you today and since October of last year, I've had the pleasure of leading an industry association in Sarnia that has three main focus areas. One is worker safety and we do that in concert with local labor and the local unions as well as local contracting companies. The second business line is environmental monitoring. So we have a network of air monitors throughout the region as well as a downriver water monitor. And the third business line is emergency preparedness and we work a lot with the municipalities and there's a long history of partnership and cooperation. And about two years ago, those three separate organizations came together under BASIS. And although there's a great amount of work and great amount of collaboration happening, what we sort of discovered early on is that no one knows about that work. And part of this effort was to go through a strategic planning process to understand how we can demonstrate value and how we can show that industry is engaged and working with partners across Sarnia-Lampton. So, I can go forward, we undertook a strategic planning process, we're in the kind of final phase of this now in terms of implementing and, you know, telling our story in a different way and that is, is going to change a little bit in terms of the relationships that we have, kind of building on the history that we've established and kind of looking towards the future. So we have a new vision, nothing that should surprise you, and I'm not going to go through all these slides because I did send a package ahead of time and happy to take questions about things that I may have skipped here, but we have a clear vision about who we want to be and the work that we want to do in the future and how we can, you know, be a good corporate citizen collectively and work with the partners that we have to address current and future needs. So, as I mentioned, there was three organizations that came together, the Industrial Educational Cooperative, the Community Awareness and Emergency Response Organization, as well as the Sarnia-Lampton Environmental Association. So we, for the last couple of years, since these groups have come together, have operated three separate boards of directors, three separate sets of bylaws and administration and banking and all of those things. And we thought there's, through our strategic planning process, a real opportunity for us to streamline that, focus on the work and not get bogged down by administrative processes. So BASIS was a... So BASIS was a term and a brand that was developed a couple of years ago, but it never quite took off. It was established during COVID times, where it was kind of tough to implement and really tough to get out there. But we feel, you know, there's enough kind of value and recognition to build on, and that's what our focus is going to be in terms of our kind of external persona and how we want to represent ourselves out to the public as well as our stakeholders. So we will have a new organizational structure, and I mentioned that each of those previous organizations had their own board of directors. We're going to consolidate that into one board of directors and establish some councils for each of the business areas. And I'll say that, you'll see the three that I've talked about, and there's a new kind of council or business area that we feel that we need to focus on, and this came out through our strategic planning process as well. And in terms of the communications and outreach, that we weren't doing a great job of telling our story, of engaging in the right way at the right time with people in the community, with stakeholders, even with municipalities. And we want to put that formally into our structure and build some platforms for communication and engagement so that we can work as a partner in this broader ecosystem. So that is a new focus area for us. While it was there before, it was kind of buried down into our organization, we're going to elevate that and put a real focus on it with more time and energy. So, you know, we had a number of recommendations that came out through our process, and, you know, you can read them through in the package, but, you know, I think it's really about us doing our business in a different way. It's about us being open to ideas and really strengthening that collaboration and partnership that we've had previously and really focusing on those things that we share, those shared objectives that we have with our different partners and stakeholders. And that is municipalities, it is local labor groups, and it is local contracting companies. So we're the place where that work is going to come together and, you know, where we can resolve issues, where we can work on things with the united voice and as a united front. So that's really what our game plan is going forward. And we realize that, you know, we do some work with the County of Lampton, we also do some work with a few of the different municipalities. And so this meeting today was sort of a starting point and a springboard for those conversations about what that looks like in the future in terms of the different municipalities that we're already working with and how we can strengthen the ties at the county level as well. We will be looking to launch this in October, you know, a bit of an announcement and a kind of rebranding, relaunch, but we're looking at January 1st, 2024, as the official kind of start date, and that kind of works well in terms of the legal entities and all of the things that we have to do in behind the scenes to prepare to do this. So, you know, while some of those formal aspects are a little in the distance, you know, we're kind of operating now in terms of the way we want to engage and how we want to operate. So, you know, there's also some work to do in terms of transitioning to the structure that I showed you, but we're very enthused about the feedback we've had so far from our other partners, and we look forward to kind of getting ourselves set up for the future. So I'm going to leave it there and happy to have a conversation or answer any questions that you might have about what was in the package.
Thank you for that, Mr. Villaln. Any questions from council? Counselor Hand.
Thank you for your presentation, Jason. And it certainly makes good sense to meld together as one, because it was fragmented and everyone had, you know, a silo of interest, but the interests were all related. So I like the direction, I've been at the meetings, and I like the direction that you're going is to communicate with everyone, and everyone has a piece and an interest in the greater organization. So I think that's the right way to go. Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Thanks.
And we appreciate having you along for the ride for this many years, and that'll continue in the future, for sure.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Comments? Seeing none, thank you again, Jason.
Thank you.
And our fourth and final delegation today is Jennifer Van Steenkis, Executive Director of Women's Interval Home, would like to speak to county council regarding intimate partner violence.
Thank you, Warden, Deputy Warden, council members, county managers, and members of the community for taking time for this presentation today, for reading the submitted documents. We are representatives of the Coordinating Committee of Violence Against Women. I'm Jennifer Van Steenkis, Executive Director of the Women's Interval Home, and with me today are Tracy Rogers, the Chair of the Coordinating Committee of Violence Against Women, Chantel Butterfield, the Executive Director of the Sexual Assault and Survivor Center, Victoria Michelli, Community Legal Worker with Community Legal Assistance Sarnia. And with us, too, are also staff and board members of the Women's Interval Home and community members and survivors. Today, during our presentation, we will review the items of your package and demonstrate why 44 Ontario cities and municipalities have decided to declare intimate partner violence an epidemic, and the statistics in Sarnia-Lampton that support the need for a similar declaration. Our motivation is to collaborate together at this specific moment stems from first, the 86 recommendations from the Renfrew request, resulting from the triple femicide in Renfrew, Ontario, where one man murdered three previous intimate partners, one by strangulation and two by gunshot to the chest. Victims were Carol Colton, Anastasia Kuzik, Natalie Warmdam. Femicide refers to the intentional killing of a woman by intimate partner, family member, or an acquaintance. There are many women who have not been killed by their partners but who live in a campaign of terror, and we recognize these people today, too. We would like to draw your attention specifically to four of the 86 inquest recommendations. First and foremost, the request to formally declare intimate partner violence an epidemic. Second, that the intimate partner violence be integrated into every municipality's community, safety, and well-being plan. Third, recognize that rural areas are two to two-and-a-half times higher, have two to two-and-a-half times higher intimate partner violence rates compared to urban centers. And finally, that every municipality must develop enhanced transitional housing. Second, we are motivated by OAS femicide report, which outlines 52 femicides in 2022, 38 femicides so far this year, and documents the seven femicides that occurred in Sarnia-Lampton since the beginning of the pandemic. Seven women murdered. Third, we draw attention to the Nova Scotia Mass Casualty Commission, which outlined the linkage between mass shootings of 22 innocent individuals and the killer's history with domestic violence. Domestic violence calls are some of the most dangerous calls for our officers, as demonstrated in recent killings both in Canada and the United States. Intimate partner violence is about power and control. Abuse comes in many forms, emotional and psychological, financial, reproductive, coercive control, spiritual abuse, and sexual violence. And these forms of abuse are high predictors for future physical abuse, criminal harassment, and potentially femicide. Noteworthy is that emotional and psychological abuse is most harmful, as it's designed to undermine a person's sense of autonomy, self, and identity, leading the victim to believe they're useless and worthless and reducing their capacity to protect themselves. Currently, 44% of women in Canada experience violence in their lifetime, and 36% of men. Further, if we take an intersectional approach and drill down in the data, we find that 61% of Indigenous women and 67% of the LGBTQ2+ community and 55% of those with disabilities are more likely to experience intimate partner violence. Approximately every six days, a woman is killed by a previous or current intimate partner, changing the trajectory of families' lives for generations. All this is a shame, because intimate partner violence is preventable through investment of resources, education, and declaring intimate partner violence an epidemic is the first step to focus the public's attention on the problem. Violence is aggravated by growing inequality in the form of increased cost of living, homelessness, social housing needs, chronic health conditions, human trafficking, food insecurity, decreased responder capacity, and the pressures on the judicial system. This means intimate partner violence will be aggravated in our current economic climate, where the cost of living is becoming out of reach for many. Sarnia-Lampton's first-ever snapshot is also included in your package today. It's a statistical representation of the local gender-based violence issue. The Coordinating Committee of Violence Against Women has compiled data from seven client databases from the Women's Interval Home, Sexual Assault Survivor Center, Victim Services, Family Counseling Center, Blue Water Health, Lampton OPP, and Sarnia Police Services. Some of the 2022 highlights are 928 calls of domestic and sexual violence to Sarnia Police Services and Lampton OPP, 379 calls to Victim Services, 1,868 crisis calls to Women's Interval Home and Sexual Assault Survivor Center. It's important to remember that 70% of the people experiencing spousal vice, excuse me, violence, and 93% of the people experiencing childhood abuse will never speak to authorities, leading to a lifetime of hidden trauma. During the pandemic, just with any episodic crisis, we see women and children experiencing an increase in violence. At the Women's Interval Home, we experienced an increase, 63% increase in the number of requests for adult and child counseling. And although over time, extreme violent crimes involving women have decreased, Ontario still experienced 52 femicides in 2022. That is one woman murdered every week, and we are on track to report the same horrendous number this year. Further, the Department of Justice states that violence costs survivors in Canada $6 billion a year in medical attention, hospitalizations, lost wages, missed school, stolen and damaged property. Therefore, we're calling on council for a robust response. We are asking you today to declare intimate partner violence an epidemic in Sarnia-Lampton, naming the disproportionate impact of violence on femicide and femicide on Indigenous, Black, and racialized people. The declaration will increase public and leader awareness to the problem and must be followed by, first, designating gender as a sixth pillar of concern in the Lampton County Community Safety and Well-Being Plan, with representation on the advisory committee from the Coordinating Committee of Violence Against Women, which is currently absent. The current five pillars in the plan include mental health and addictions, poverty, community safety, systematic racism, and housing and homelessness. Oddly, gender is missing, which indicates the lack of priority on gender issues in Sarnia-Lampton despite the present crisis. Second, we are asking for meaningful engagement from you, with us, the frontline agencies, to strengthen prevention efforts and protect and support victims by advocating for transitional housing with wraparound services for survivors of intimate partner violence and human trafficking. Third, we need to hold perpetrators accountable by enforcing attendance to PAR, that's the Partner Assault Response Program, and meeting crimes with appropriate responses. Finally and fourth, fourth and finally, excuse me, we need you, the leaders of Sarnia-Lampton, to advocate at all levels of government to have intimate partner violence declared a provincial epidemic and prioritize and fund community-based, non-police-based violence prevention efforts. Ultimately, we are asking council to recognize the severity of the situation and declare intimate partner violence an epidemic in Sarnia-Lampton today, and to help us end the cycle of gender-based violence before another woman is killed, or another child learns to be a victim or abuser, or another family is shattered. Thank you for listening to our appeal today.
Thank you for that presentation. I would remind county council that we did pass the resolution from Lannock Carney on May 3. And also, we could refer this to the Community Safety and Well-Being Leadership Table, but Counselor Bradley.
Well, thank you for the presentation. It's very disturbing. I agree with you, Warden. We did pass a motion back in May, but I don't think it was as encompassing. It was more directed at the rural, it was a motion from, that was at the rural aspects, and I think we need to broaden it right across the urban area and the whole county, so I'd be more than willing to move the epidemic declaration, and at the same time ask the province to do the same thing. But I do have a question for you on the transitional housing. Where do you see the county fitting into that? Because you're an agency that's struggling right now yourselves to do certain things along with the other agencies. Is the county the best place to lead this so that we could get ahead? Because I think people need to understand how desperate the need for transitional housing is for women leaving the home, and to get them into a better place so they can not end up back in the home. So where would you see the county on that issue?
I'd like to respond to both questions. First, the declaration, when I read it, I found that it was indirect. We need to have it directly worded towards Sarnia-Lampton and with naming the disproportionate impact of violence against Indigenous, Black, and racialized people. So I found the declaration, as it was written, weak, and it could be clarified. In terms of transitional housing, we had the opportunity to submit a proposal to CMHC, and we were unable to do so because of lack of support from local politicians. Transitional housing is extremely important. Women are not ready to move directly into their permanent housing, as indicated in the Housing First model. The Housing First model has never had a gender analysis done to it, and if it had of, it would have realized that they're asking for something of women that is inappropriate. Women that are coming from domestic violence, they spend six weeks in our organization with security. So to move someone to a house, we have to have onboard the abuser, which will stop their stalking and criminal harassment in six weeks. So you can see that's an impossible ask. Further, women have lots of other challenges. Many do not have a paper trail for credit, because that has been, because of the financial abuse, they have perhaps brain injuries, they have PTSDs. So moving them directly into the community from our shelter, it's not a responsible action. So we need support to, we need financial support, and we need a commitment from county and city to support us in transitional housing.
Counselor Bradley, follow-up.
Follow-up, can I ask the clerk to reflect the broader comments remain on the motion I moved to declare it an epidemic? So some of the detail is in that also, so it's much more specific. I have a question for Ms. Colasanti.
Sorry, Counselor Bradley, could you get a second for your motion before we continue? Deputy Warden White? Sorry.
Thank you. No, I understand. To Ms. Colasanti, what is the role of the county in developing this transitional housing? We've been talking for years about this and trying to find locations and find the seat funding. So now that there is going to be seat funding available, will that be available to this social service group to move forward, given the desperate need within, in the county? So what is the county's role?
Ms. Colasanti, please.
Through you, Warden, to Counselor Bradley. The county's role for transitional housing is twofold. Certainly, we do play a role in some development, and we are happy to work with the Women's Interval Home on that, if funding becomes available. Secondly, we do use, we do use social housing as, it's not transitional housing, but it is housing that's available, and women experiencing violence are one of our, actually, they're one of our only priority populations right now. So when they apply for housing, they go right to the top of our list if they meet certain criteria. And we do have several units. And we do have several units available specifically for the Women's Interval Home right now.
Just not to turn into a ping pong game, but can I ask for your comments about the need for specific housing versus what, which is good, what is presently in place?
Jennifer, please.
Thank you. Currently, we have three units with the County of Lampton for transitional housing. Those units are full. We had an external consultant do an evaluation, and VINC Consulting, and she determined that we need fifteen to eighteen units for transitional housing. I would like to see that as, in a consolidated unit, where we can give those wraparound supports that the women need so desperately, and not spread out through the county. It goes counter to what many people say, that people should be integrated into the community, and I believe in that model, but not at that moment, when people are surviving domestic violence, human trafficking, intimate partner violence.
Deputy Warden White.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. Thank you, Jennifer, for your presentation today. On that topic of transitional housing, then, and with the lack thereof, what is the current choice that families are making, women, women with children are making, in lieu of having that safe space to transition?
Jennifer, please.
Unfortunately, many women do return to abusers. There's just no other choice. They'll try family members and friends. There's a hidden homeless population of women who couch surf. They aren't reporting themselves as homeless while they use their social network, and then eventually, they'll turn to homelessness. And the statistics show that thirty-eight percent of homeless people are women, and seventy-five percent of that population have experienced domestic violence. And if you think about this in a broader term, many of those women have children with them, and so, and children who are homeless often turn into adult homeless people. So this is really a point where we can stop the flow of people into the homeless population by dealing with it at this moment.
Any other, councillor Dennis.
So, I'm sorry, Warden Marriott, to the young lady. Years ago, when I first got into real estate, back in the early to mid-nineties, probably a third of my new listings were marital breakdowns. And back in the mid-nineties, the economy was horrible, it was terrible. We lost a lot of jobs, the economy was just brutal. And about a third of my new listings were marital breakdowns, and many of those marital breakdowns were just horrible, nasty, nasty marital breakdowns. And a lot of people explained it, it was the stress of the economy that caused those. And of course, you saw what took place during the lockdowns and the pandemic. You had an influx of women that needed your services. It's no secret that the cost of living right now is soaring, interest rates are rising. There's a lot of people that are suffering right now, high food costs. Do you see, because of that, there's more stress at home and all that sort of thing, do you see, has that taken its toll on young women coming in to use your services? Again, because of the stress at home, because of what's occurring out there, because of those factors?
Jennifer, please.
So whenever there's a social episode, a crisis, it usually turns out that women and children are experiencing more violence. So yes, the economy, pressures on the economy and the cost of living will add to that. I'd just like to point out that the rise in cost of inequality started in the 1950s, and it's on a trajectory, I wish I had the graph with me here today, you could see it. So the crisis, we can't really compare the economic crisis at this moment with a couple of decades ago. It's just, it's a snowball effect that is, it's not showing any means of turning around. Women are always used as an object to release stress. We see that in times of war or any other episodic crisis in society.
Okay. Any other questions or comments before I call the vote on the motion on the floor? Deputy Warden White, please.
Yes, in regards to the motion, I would just like to ensure that that is referred to the Community Safety and Well-Being Leadership Table. As co-chair, I know my co-chair, deputy chief Julie Craddock from Sarnia Police Services, has been fiercely motivated to ensure that the, that the terms of reference truly do enable the leadership table to reflect the needs of the community beyond having things divided into five pillars. So currently, there is work being undertaken to effectively integrate the full picture to ensure that the leadership table does take into account all of these various elements. And I think, obviously, this is going to be a critical component of ensuring that the true picture of what's going on in our community is reflected in those discussions, and that we will be able to continue that outreach with your organizations collectively. So thank you for that.
Thank you. So are we clear on the, councillor Bradley, are we clear on the motion?
I'm just going to ask for the motion to be recorded, because I think it's really important there to be a unanimous vote from this council to the province on this issue and to the community.
Okay, noted, recorded vote. And we'll ask the clerk to, deputy clerk, to do the randomizer. The lucky winner is councillor Miller.
Just to repeat the motion, it's a two-part motion, moved by councillor Bradley and seconded by councillor White. The first part of the motion being to declare intimate partner violence as an epidemic in the county, and to send that request to the province to declare, to make that same declaration province-wide. The second portion being to refer the gender pillar issue to the community well-being, safety, and safety leadership table.
But I saw the third part being that we also, the county, assists in asking the province to properly fund the interval home, and to give the support services in the community to deal with this epidemic. And we have a meeting allegedly coming up at some time with the MPPs, where we can raise this issue at the same time.
Okay. Yeah. Go ahead, Jennifer, please.
I'd like to broaden what you've said, Mayor Bradley, and to properly fund the Women's Interval Home Sexual Assault Survivor Centre and Victim Services.
Okay. Pretty good. Call the vote, please.
Councillor Bradley has requested a recorded vote, and we'll start the vote with councillor Miller.
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Sageman?
Yes.
Councillor Veen?
Yes.
Deputy Warden White?
Yes.
Councillor Agar?
Yes.
Councillor Atkinson?
Yes.
Councillor Bucci?
Yes.
Councillor Bradley?
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Broad?
Yes.
That's a yes. Councillor Case?
Yes.
Thank you. That's a yes. Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Thank you. That's a yes. Councillor Dennis?
Yes.
Thank you. That's a yes. Councillor Ferguson?
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Hand?
Yes.
That's a yes. Thank you. Councillor Field?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes.
Okay. Thank you again for your presentation this morning.
I'd like to thank council for the motion and approval.
Okay, moving on to item number nine, minutes of open session, council of July the fifth. Do we have a motion to adopt those minutes? Councillor Veen moves. Councillor Dennis seconds. All in favor? Let's carry it. And item number ten, correspondence to receive and file. We have eight items. Councillor Miller moves. Councillor Sageman seconds. To receive and file all eight items, all in favor? Let's carry it. That was 10A. 10B is correspondence from member municipalities. We have one item from Mandy Pearson, the clerk, town of Petroya. Do we have a motion to receive and file that? Councillor Agar moves, seconded by councillor Dennis. All in favor? Let's carry it. And item number 11, board of health. Dr. Duick. So we have seven items here. If you want to receive and file all seven at once, councillor Case and councillor Broad, all in favor? Let's carry it. Councillor Bradley?
Appropriate now for something under new business with public health?
I believe so. Yeah, we could do that after information reports, if that's okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so a motion to receive and file the information reports. There's four of them. Councillor Cook and councillor, sorry, councillor Atkinson, all in favor of that? Let's carry it. Please go ahead now, Mr. Councillor Bradley.
Thank you, to the medical officer of health. One thing, I noticed the other day, you put out the cooling stations throughout the county. I noticed the hours are very business hours. Is there any way that can change as we go into the winter, the warming stations? And the second question, which I was going to raise under new business, is it possible for all of us here, and for our respective municipalities, to get a one-pager on who we contact on the homeless issue, who we contact on the addiction issue? And I want, the reason I wanted it, I want it for the public, so we can post it on our respective websites, and help public health, because there's a lot of confusion out there about do you call the police when you're dealing with some of these issues, do you call the health unit? And is it possible, just do a one-pager, that we could then circulate to all of us, that if we chose in our own communities to post it, so it's there through the entire winter, which I believe is going to be the toughest winter ever, as it relates to the homeless issue?
Dr. Duick, please.
Thank you, through you, Warden, to councillor Bradley. Certainly, we can look at the hours of the cooling centers and warming centers for the winter, and work with the appropriate partners to take a look at what we can do about those hours. And secondly, for the one-pager on who to contact, that certainly is reasonable to provide, and we'll take that back and work on it.
Thank you, Dr. Duick. Councillor Hand?
Just a question. I think the facility at Lauralee Church, is that used as a cooling center? I know it's temporary, but I think those hours go beyond a regular, you know, five o'clock day.
Dr. Duick, please.
Thank you for the question. Through you, Warden Marriott, I'm wondering if Chad, the manager of environmental health, is online and could provide a fulsome response to that question?
Mr. Eichert?
Thank you for the question. Through you, Warden Marriott, the Lauralee Church, I would have to check our listing to see if it is, I believe it is, but I don't have it right in front of me, but I would have to check to see if it is one of our cooling centers.
Would Ms. Colasanti like to comment on this as well? Please.
Thank you for that question. The Lauralee Church, I think you're referring to, is the Housing and Homeless Resource Center. Individuals can go there from 12:30 to 4:00 p.m. only right now, Monday to Friday. You might recall, that's our pilot program that we're reviewing right now, so those are the hours.
Sorry, anything else? Seeing none, thank you, Dr. Duick, for that. And items not requiring a motion, item number 12, items not requiring a motion, seniors' advisory committee minutes dated June 27, 2023. Councillor Veen? Moves to receive and file. Councillor Sageman seconds. All in favor of that? That's carried. And moving on to item number 13, reports requiring a motion. 13A is Cultural Services Division, a report dated September 6, 2023, regarding climate change adaptation strategy. And I would also comment that on page 667, we would add the date April 30, 2024. Do we have a move for that? Councillor Atkinson, seconded by councillor Cook. All in favor? Opposed, if any? That's carried. 13B, Finance Facilities and Court Services Division, report dated September 6, 2023, regarding the 2024 New Capital Grant Requests. Do we have a motion for that? Councillor Cook? And councillor Bradley? No, councillor Agar. All in favor of that? Like to speak. Okay, go ahead, councillor Bradley.
But the third year in a row, and I was opposed, as I recall, to Mayor Petroy at the time too, is that we feel that we should at least leave that door open on legitimate capital requests to come to this council for consideration. So I'll be voting against the motion, because I think there's opportunities, and I think of Blue Water Health, when they're moving forward on some of their strategic investments with the 24 new beds and the addiction center, that we should still be open to hearing from some of these groups. So I won't be supporting the motion for the third year.
Okay. Any other comments before I call the vote? All those in favor? Opposed, if any? Item number 14, committee minutes. I'd call on councillor Veen, please.
Thank you, Warden. The AM committee met on August 16, and I present these minutes for council's approval.
Thank you. Motion number one is under Infrastructure and Development Services Division. It was correspondence under information reports. Motion number two, received and filed. Reports requiring a motion under, regarding County Road 79, that was motion number three. Report dated August 16, regarding rural inter-community transit, that was motion number four. Councillor Bradley?
I have discussed this with mayor Case. Before venturing into spending a lot of money, which we talked about it, that perhaps the first step should be to ask each respective mayor and councillor to ask their own community, is the need that profound, that we need to go and spend this type of money? Again, I brought this forward in 2016, and there wasn't a lot of support in the communities when they drilled down deep. So instead of venturing into that, I think, and I'm looking for suggestions on, is there some way the county could just open up for public input, like we have that Sarnia Speaks thing, just to gather that, and see if it's even worth going to the next step? Is that, Mayor Case, we sort of agreed to that, or just, again, because of the amount of money involved, is the need as pressing as to spend that type of money with the same results we did in 2016?
Okay. Councillor Case, did you want to comment on that?
Well, yeah, and just to add to that, the obvious in all this is provincial funding being available, and knowing that there is no provincial funding available at this time, unless something has changed in the last 48 hours, but knowing our provincial government, it could have. I guess that's the other big question mark for everybody, is there going to be provincial funding available? I think it's up to us to include that in our due diligence as well, to maybe have those meetings. Again, we're supposed to have our MPPs from Sarnia Lampton, Lampton County. Again, we're supposed to have our MPPs from Sarnia Lampton, Lampton, Cape Melrose, before us, hopefully sooner than later, and that would be a good question for them as well because they're doing it in other jurisdictions close by, and I still see the merits in the project. But I would agree, instead of going out and spending $150,000 without maybe checking in with the local municipalities, it might just be a step that we don't take until we check the temperature of those communities.
Okay. So do we have a motion regarding?
I would move that we refer to the lower tier and give them 30 to 45 days to respond whether they support moving ahead on this study, and that'll be the test of hearing from the grassroots about, is the need to the point? Because I know in Lampton Shores, there's transportation, there's in other places. So just let's ask the lower tier, what do you think? And do you think this is worth doing? And that'd be a nice opinion poll without the county having to do anything. And I'd say 45 days is enough to send it out and get it back to us.
Okay. Do we have a second or for that motion? Counselor Case? Mr. TiVo, would you like to comment on that timeframe?
Yes, if I, thank you, Warden Marriott. If I understand correctly, ultimately, the motion is to table this matter until such time that county council, through its resources, have consulted with each one of our member municipalities on their known needs for additional transportation in their respective municipalities, and to report back on the results thereof within, let's say, by the December meeting.
Whether they support the initiative or not. And I think that's a way of getting a very good sample of what the Lampton County thinks.
Okay. So if I understand correctly, it's moved by Counselor Bradley and seconded by Counselor Case, that item number four be tabled until such time as county, county staff have consulted with the local municipalities on, one, the need for additional transportation in their municipalities, and secondly, the support for additional transportation in their municipalities, and for staff to bring a report back to county council at its November 29 meeting.
Okay. Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Ward. Just to expand on what Counselor Bradley's saying about Lampton Shores, we have been involved with Huron Shores Transit for several years now, seeing the numbers increase very rapidly over the last couple of years, especially since COVID has passed. And I guess I'd like to see them maybe do a presentation for county council, just so you can actually see how it operates, at least in Lampton Shores area, because we go outside of our area through Huron County, all the way down to London. So it's a, for us, it works very well. We have a lot of folks from Sarnia come to our area. College students are coming to work in our area, and that's our heavy, heaviest used transit is from Grand Bend into Sarnia. So we have this route that we use. So if they were to come and do a presentation, they would actually see on paper how it works. Now, we do have funding to 2025, which helps us out, obviously, but it just, how the program operates is, for just logistics, anyway.
Okay. Thank you. Motion on the floor. Call the vote on that. All in favor? Opposed, if any? That carries. Back to committee.
Do you need direction for that? Are they, we're just invited, so?
So the Huron transportation will be invited to the November meeting. It's incorporated?
We, we've, we accepted a friendly amendment, given that it doesn't go against the first two.
Back to the committee AM minutes. Motion number five was under Cultural Services, Information Reports. And number six was a report requiring a motion on library donations. And number seven, also regarding library policy manual. And number eight, the report dated August 16, Museums, Gallery and Archives Collection Management. And number nine was adjournment. Counselor Veen, please.
Thank you, Warden. I move the minutes as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second or for that? Counselor Agar, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Moving on to minutes for committee PM, I would call on Counselor Ferguson, please.
I'd like to present the minutes for the PM committee for August the 16th to county council.
Thank you. So motion number one, under Long Term Care, correspondence to receive and file. Number two was information reports from Long Term Care Division. And motion number three was Corporate Services, correspondence that was received and filed. And motion number four, under Finance Facilities and Court Services Division, information report. And number five was a report requiring a motion on the judicial resources impacts on provincial offenses court. And number six was under Social Services Division, information reports. And reports requiring a motion was number seven. Counselor Bradley?
Number seven, A, certainly supportive of B. Why cannot this be done with existing staff? Because there was someone hired, I recall, a position created last year on the affordable housing question, and now we're looking at another full-time affordable housing development project coordinator. How does that, how is that going to work? Does this mean the county now is going to take the lead on these other projects that are out there that want to move forward?
Ms. Colasani, please.
Certainly, through you, Warden, to Counselor Bradley. The position that's being hired is actually a temporary position. It'll be full-time for, we anticipate, 18 months, and it's to start to really move those affordable housing developments forward. We need someone to be working with the developers, with the nonprofit agencies, full-time to really start to get these ready, shovel-ready, and to assist us with the funding. The funding part, most of the existing staff will be working on those applications with CMHC, but it's really doing that work to get them shovel-ready so we can start to move on, on several projects.
Thank you. So motion number eight was regarding homelessness community outreach services. And number nine was report dated August 16 regarding service and innovation planning proposal for future delivery of employment services. And number 10 was adjournment. Counselor Ferguson, please.
I'd like to move these minutes as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second or? Counselor Atkinson, all in favor? That's carried. Item number 15, we have no items tabled from previous meetings. Number 16, we have no notice of motions as well. 17, other business. Does anyone, any counselor have any other business? Counselor Case, please.
Yes, Mr. Warden, through you to county council. I just wanted to say a big thank you to all the municipalities that reached out under the, when we had our weather event, the eight inches of rain, about five hours. We really did appreciate the offer of assistance by many municipalities, and we'd also like to thank our friends at Plinton, Wyoming, Mayor Atkinson and his group for providing some folks to give us a hand over the weekend after the storm. So again, thanks very much to everybody. You reached out, very much appreciate it. And as well, to the county of Lampton, and again, the assistance they provided as well. So thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you for that. It was a, hopefully, a one-in-a-hundred-year storm, so. Any other business? Seeing none, we'll move to item number 18, Notice of Bylaws. Mr. Beauchamp, please.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. It is moved by Counselor Bucci and seconded by Counselor Cook, that bylaw number 26 of 2023, as circulated, be taken as being read a first and a second time.
All in favor? That's carried.
It is moved by Counselor Cook and seconded by Counselor Bucci, that bylaw number 26 of 2023, as circulated, be taken as being read a third and final time.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. And I would look for a motion to adjourn. Next meeting will be October the 4th. Counselor Broad, this moves, seconded by Counselor Veen. All in favor? That's carried. And please join me in the singing of O Canada. I'm going to go to committee room three. Oh, yeah.